Council President, could you turn your microphone on?
Good evening. It is now June 6:30 PM on June 21st, and I think we're actually getting a little bit of feedback on the microphone here, but we are joined by, remotely by council members Lydia Sepadossen and council member Susan Honda, who are at a conference at the moment. And I'm going to excuse Mayor Farrell and council member Tran, who are not able to be here this evening. And so, good evening. You will now have me for your five minutes of mayor, and I am going to have the meeting tonight, and hopefully it's a beautiful evening, and hopefully we'll move along, and we can all go and enjoy our evening. So, I would like to ask you to please stand, so we can pledge our allegiance to our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very, very much, everyone who left their beautiful evening to come spend it with us tonight. We have no mayor's issues, emerging issues to report. There's really nothing to report this evening. So, I'm going to go straight to public comment. And so, when I call your name, would you please come to the podium? Cheryl Hurst.
Good evening. Cheryl Hurst from Do the Right Thing nonprofit, and I am here to bring the thank you for the City of Federway helping with the March of Diapers Drive. First of all, I want to say thank you to Mayor Farrell with the council for actually being at, and to the Fred Meyer in Federway for being there and helping collect at the end of March, and for Bellvedino for putting it all together. Good news, good news, good news. This year, just from the City of Federway, from the Fred Meyer event, 10,699 diapers, 6,624 wipes. And that actually comes to as part of a whole total. So, the 8th Annual March of Diapers Drive did 396,801 diapers and 199,304 wipes. So, we appreciate your support, and if it wasn't for people from Federway and 12 other cities, we wouldn't be this successful. We also want to let you know that they went to 18 different nonprofits. About eight of them actually directly help people from Federway, but we also give to ones in Everett, Kent, and various other places, Edgewood, Milton, and that. So, thank you, everyone, and I will run this up to Council President Linda Kochmar.
Well, thank you very much. Actually, I can come down there, but that's all right. Thank you. Thank you. We owe you a debt of gratitude, and all the moms out there, thank you very, very much. Is this your fourth year of doing this?
Eighth.
Eighth. Oh, my gosh. Thank you. We'll hang this proudly in the mayor's office. Thank you very much. Next person is, ah, let's have Ken Levens.
Did you bring me a Barbie doll?
Oh, no. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we can't hear. Sorry, Tim, I can't hear you.
You're gonna have to go closer to the mic.
Sorry about that. That's what they look like. That's what our town looks like all over, okay? If we don't take this thing seriously, then it's on all of us. It affects every citizen in Federway. That doesn't look good. That's not for keeping rain out. That's for hiding when you're doing drugs, okay? We have people doing drugs in public around our town, all over. They're not from Federway. They're being dropped off here daily, half a dozen at a time. If you look in these pictures, you'll see these people gathering. They're coming from the station. We have nobody checking on this. I think the police are trying to do the best they can, but they can't be everywhere. And I asked the mayor to have somebody that works for the city that actually takes care of this. Ask these people when they come into town, "Where are you from? What are you doing here? Who sent you here? Who dropped you off? Why?" So, we don't deserve this. Those orange caps down there, those don't ever go away. Those are in our wetlands. When you had, when the city had contractors come out, they just basically flattened everything, and they went right into the soil. That's protected soil, federally protected soil, I believe. So, we're not doing something about it. The thing is, if you look at this law, all you have to do is have this thing affixed a name on the cart. That's all that has to be done, on the cart. So, all those carts are legal, every one of them. If you look in all those pictures, you can see it's Target, it's H Mart, it's Walmart, and so on. These are stolen property. So, intent is very simple. We need to arrest these people. We need to bring them into our court for a misdemeanor, and we need to give them an option to go into treatment or in jail. These are drug addicts. They're not homeless. This isn't a homeless problem. We're wasting a billion dollars to nonprofits and other organizations out there that aren't really doing what the issue is, and they're not really working for these people. They're human beings, and it's not right that we're not actually out there doing this, and we have people making excuses for why they can or can't do something. I want people that can do something for our city. I want people that work here that can. And I'm sorry that the mayor's not here, because he's the one that's actually the leader. He needs to stand up and do this. He knows about court. He knows that intent can be proven when you have, when you have the cart in your possession, or you're stolen. Of course, you have intent for it not to be used by the store, because you have it away from the store. So, and that person has possession of it. It's very simple. Let's just do the right thing, test it in court, and we'll win this thing. The City of Federway doesn't deserve it. We deserve a beautiful, clean city, and these people deserve to go into treatment and actually get their lives back. Their families deserve to get them back as people, as their family. They're out there in the streets, and they've given up on them, because they can't do anything for them. So, I appreciate it. Sorry for the phone.
Thank you very much, Ken. I appreciate that.
And I'll clean this up. Actually, I'll leave it for now, because that's what our city looks like.
Well, no, actually, would you mind? Thank you very much. But I just spoke with Jack Walsh, who, council member, who said that he will have this on his agenda. And I know it's a very vexing issue, and believe me, we're not, we're not the only ones that are -- we have, yeah, we're very much aware that they're doing drugs behind those big golf umbrellas. It's a terrible thing.
Well, while it's being picked up, I mean, just today, I, driving down Pack Highway between 336th and 324th, there were six, either six or seven shopping carts with people there that looked very similar to this. I think six individuals, seven shopping carts. One of them, one of them was a double. So, anyway.
So, we know, we know.
Perhaps, oh, I'm sorry.
Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Perhaps we could have the city attorney, or the police chief, or Brian Davis, address this once again, tonight?
As a, as a reporter, just to comment?
Well, just to comment, because I would just like to hear from staff again.
Sure. So, one thing to, just to be aware of, so we have two staff members that are, that handle shopping carts. One was, got another job elsewhere, and the other one is sick, and so we do have backup crews that are handling the shopping carts right now. So, there may be a little bit of lag in terms of getting the carts that are reported. But all of them are addressed, and are eventually either collected, or returned to the carts, depending, or the stores, depending on what the stores want. So, there is gonna be a little bit of delay right now. Now, with regards to signs on the carts, that is a requirement that is on the books now. We do have that law that was adopted as part of the 2018 ordinance. So, there is, there is a requirement now that stores have to do that. As to proving intent, that's a little more problematic, and so that's something that we've experienced, not just something that we're trying to be difficult, or make excuses for, but that is something to when you encounter someone on the street and say, you know, "Did you take this cart from property?" invariably, they say, "No, I didn't," or that "I did not do it with intent to remove it from the property." And so, prosecuting someone for having a cart on the street is, is a challenge, something that we are trying to address through other means than, than just trying to target the person.
You know, Mr. Davis, is there any way, we know that they're doing drugs behind those umbrellas. Is there anything we can do about that? We know that they're buying, especially in front of the Eastwood Motel, they're just gathering out there, and they have these big golf umbrellas, and they sit behind the golf umbrellas, and that's where they do their drugs. I actually saw a person in front of the post office bending over, losing his pants, and just pretending to pick something up, but he was in that position for five minutes. And I timed him. I sat there and watched him, and I thought, well, he must have been doing a drug and just stayed in that position until it wore off. I mean, literally, it's a terrible thing to be happening to those individuals, but it's also a terrible thing to be happening to our city.
Yes, and as we've said before, if you do encounter, you know, you call the police, and they can divert them to resources that would help them, to get the help they need. A lot of times, they don't accept those, those suggestions. But the, but the police have encountered them on more than one occasion, where they try to connect them to the resources that would ultimately help them.
So, go ahead.
If, if on the carts, if the stores on the carts posted not only their name, but saying that if this is, is off the premise, it is stolen property, would that be able to take care of the intent problem, where it's obviously posted that, that if it's off the premise, it is stolen?
I can respond to that. So, we're talking in vague generalities right now. When you're in court, it's a specific case that's in front of you. So, there's another side of the story that's told to a jury, and the prosecution does not prove it by a hunch, or it's more likely than not, or maybe it happened. It has to be beyond a reasonable doubt. So, that's been our experience, is that, and that's not just for stolen shopping cart possession. Possession of stolen property, in my experience, is probably one of the most difficult charges to prove. That said, I want to make it clear that we don't decline cases. If these cases, if a stolen shopping cart case is ever presented, it comes across the prosecutor's desk, it will be prosecuted. It's just, that is a very difficult case to prove, and it's not how generally the police use their valuable time to enforce the laws in the city.
Is it necessary for the store to press charges?
Under the statute, yes.
There's no way that just the city can, can enforce it without the store saying, "Hey, we want to press charges"?
Actually, you might be able to prove it without, without a store employee, if there's a sign documented on the shopping cart. But you can't prove it without a sign on the shopping cart.
Yeah. Because, because obviously, what's happening, the status quo is not, is not working. I mean, it's probably a lot better than if we didn't have the program. I mean, not to say that it doesn't, it doesn't help, but it certainly isn't solving the problem in its entirety. And, and I think that for somebody coming to Federway, somebody visiting Federway, well, it seems like in the last few months, it has gotten a lot worse. Just on Sunday, I spoke with somebody who they are, that they live here, they're residents, where they were away for six months, and they said that they came back, and they were, they were amazed at how much worse the problems have become in the last six months.
So, perhaps you could carry this conversation?
Yeah, we'll, we'll carry it on. Yeah, later.
Yeah, could I jump in? I mean, we don't legislate from the dais. We have great discussions. But can we move this to Federac and have a really in-depth discussion?
Yeah. Do it in Parks, Human Services, and Public Safety.
Certainly, yes.
It could probably fit into any of the committees, actually, but probably whatever committee comes first.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. You're satisfied with the answer there?
For now, sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Moving on, we have Jeff Tancredi, who's going to, I'm proof of it, so I assume it's with regard to the same topic.
Good evening. Jeff Tancredi, Federway resident. Yes, the other issue I wanted to bring up is the parking lot at the old Top Foods, where Top Foods was, where you have several businesses. I think Moa, the hairstylist, and then Home &amp; Home, they have their businesses there. It looks like it's becoming a parking lot for RVs that are about 30 years old. It doesn't look good. It doesn't look good. In addition to what's going on at Pack Highway with what has already been discussed, you know, and then you see some cars there that look, you know, I don't know what's going on. But, so, I've noticed that for the past week, so I just wanted to bring that up. And then, again, you know, with Pack Highway, the thing that bothers me is, you know, having worked in immigration law, and I'm familiar with VUCA, which is violating the Uniform Controlled Substance Act, which is a federal statute, and I believe it's a state statute, and then theft, which is a crime involving moral perpetuity. It's a, it's a crime, okay? It's a crime to steal. And so, this is really bothersome. And I joined Stand Up Federway last year, because I was told that the last city council didn't listen. And so, we went out knocking on a lot of doors to change the structure of the city council, to change the face of the council, and hope that they would be more responsive. And I'm not saying they are not responsive. I'm just saying, these problems aren't getting fixed. People have problems. They have problems with drug addiction, okay? I've been in the encampments. I've cleaned them up, some of them up. And these people don't want to be integrated into society. So, let's get them into treatment. You're just letting them languish on the street. This is madness. I mean, this is, I was in Mogadishu, Somalia, when I was in the army. I never saw something like this. Oh, yeah, it's bad over there. It was bad. But, you ever been to these encampments? It looks like a, it's, it's a disaster. This is in Federway, Washington, United States of America. These people on the street need help. They need help, okay? We're not interested in somebody making money on this whole thing, some ring, or somebody is involved in making money off of this. Let's get them into treatment. They're drug addicts, and you all know it. Let's quit playing games. This is disgusting, and we're gonna have to continue to be on top of this. We're not gonna let it go, because we live here. We live here. So, please get involved in these issues, so that we can have a good city again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Thank you. Thank you. And I see Anna Patrick. It looks like it's the same topic. Would you like to come to the podium?
Good evening. So, yeah, just when I, when I heard our city attorney talking about how we have to ask if the cart belongs to a person, I just, I'm starting to think that we've gone a little too far in being permissive with people who obviously have stolen carts, when they're off of the property that they are designated to be used for. So, if we see somebody walking with a shopping cart full of items, we know if the shopping cart is labeled for that particular store, that it belongs to the store, not the person that's using it for the items that they are filling it with. Now, one of the carts that I found when I did a cleanup, a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago, had stolen merchandise in it. It was from, I think, the makeup store on 320th, Ulta. Thank you. It was just packed to the brim with stolen items from Ulta, that all were emptied out, mixed together into this big old mess in the cart. It was disgusting to clean up. And these are all over the city. If you drive up and down Pack Highway, and even, you know, 320th, they're all over the city. We've gotta get a handle on it. You know, it seems to me that our city probably is doing whatever it can to avoid a lawsuit, but maybe it's gonna take a lawsuit by the citizens against the city, when they run into a shopping cart that's out in the middle of the road. I just saw somebody posting that in the middle of the road on 320th. So, what's it gonna take to actually do something about this? This is a liability for the city at this point. So, and then also, for the rest of us, one thing that we can do is, when we're out shopping, just put the shopping cart back towards the store, instead of leaving it out somewhere where somebody can grab it and use it. There might be something we can do that we have control over. And then, yeah, just, why are we even asking if the shopping cart belongs to somebody? As soon as I heard that, I had to get, sign up to speak, because this is just ridiculous. It's nonsense. We need to start telling these folks that are walking around with stolen shopping carts to put it away. Go put the shopping cart back. It's not yours. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Patrick. And as we said, this will be on the agenda for Parks Public Safety with Council Member Walsh.
And Council President, that was obviously directed at me. I feel like I should at least explain a little better. I don't, maybe my point wasn't gotten through. I was talking about proving a case to a jury in a criminal trial. So, often, it's pretty obvious to a normal person what we think is happening in a criminal case. A lot of people have that, you know, you can, someone walks like a duck, talks like a duck, it's probably a duck, probably doesn't cut it in court. And so, there's another attorney in the room that asks those questions, not necessarily the prosecutor, but their defense attorney asks those questions, and you'll hear the whole explanation as to why they have the shopping cart, and they didn't steal it. They're just using it, because they're down on their luck, et cetera. So, like I said, this is ultimately an enforcement issue. We are happy to prosecute cases that are presented. It's just, it's not the easiest case to prove, and officers have generally chosen to use their time to enforce other laws.
So, thank you very much. That was our attorney, speaking in legalese. So, thank you. Are we discussing when we've hired more, maybe I should ask this of Deputy Chief Neil, are we going to have enforcement when we have more officers?
First of all, I agree that it is disgusting. It's filthy. And secondly, and I hate to start pointing a finger, but if these carts are not labeled, it's nonstarter from the beginning, right?
They're all labeled.
The defense that "I didn't take it. I found it. I found it while I was out here" seems to be the most common thing we run into, and, but that isn't the most important blocker. I'm hearing what police officers would like to do, and that is solve the problem by putting people in jail. And quite frankly, that works for a lot of different things. But over the last couple of years, jail has been increasingly removed as a tool to solve these criminal and social issues, especially at the misdemeanor level. It is incredibly frustrating to every officer on the street as well. I don't know the solution. It sounds very simple. Arrest everybody with a shopping cart. I don't know how to answer the question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Deputy Chief. Well, we will get this on our Parks Public Safety agenda, and try to find, just work toward a solution. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of those who spoke. Now, we're going to have fun with Ms... Oh, we have another person, Betty. Is, you want, would you like to speak on the same topic?
No.
A different topic? Oh, okay. Well, go ahead.
So, my name is Betty Taylor. Didn't prove this out, but I will. You know, I seen my friend, Cheryl Hurst. She's a good friend of mine. I seen her.
Betty, could you speak into the microphone?
I sure can. I've seen her over the years work tirelessly over diapers. I've seen her struggles. I mean, seriously, it's not easy when you're a one-man show. I feel that it's really important that, I've seen her like, I mean, I can, I can accept the fact that when she got up here and she talked about, but it's just not that I have to talk about, but she talked about the March of Diapers and, and the things for Federway. But I believe that, I don't know, just more honor is deserved, because I feel that we should, there's a lot of, I, there's just a lot of ways that we can go to help to make this better year after year, even if it came to the point of, of her nonprofit applying for funding from the City of Federway to support the March of Diapers. Also, not just the March of Diapers, but the, her other, the other nonprofits that she has, you know, for, for kids in the schools. I mean, really, I've seen her basically take money out of her own pocket to buy books for students. As hard of a worker as she is, I think that we need to get behind her, even in that endeavor. We need to come with resources. We need to help her to apply for funding, so that she won't be overturbing or overtaxed, because she has a vision, and she has a goal. And it's, it's, it's good to say that we're gonna stand behind her, but actions speak louder than words. And also, I know that she gave you the plaque, but I would have liked to see a picture with you and her, or the council members, because this is more than just handing you a plaque. This is like, she just can't hand you a plaque. It's like, it's just not, and then for her to just sit down and just hand you a plaque. It's got to be more to it. It is, because that's who she is.
Thank you very much, Betty. And I agree. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I've already suggested to the mayor that he give her a key to the city, is what I would like to see. So, let's remind him. Thank you very much. Thank you, Cheryl. All right, now we have a special guest this evening. We have Ms. Washington Universe. Okay, thank you. And thank you for coming this evening. Elizabeth Kim. She is from this area. She's filled out a pink sheet, and she's going to speak to us this evening about her platform. She's running for Ms. Universe. She's from University of Washington. Ms. Universe, transcontinental. Go ahead, please.
Thank you so much, Council President Linda, and thank you, all of you. And Federway has been a great city for me. I am from South Korea, and as you know, there are a lot of Korean people living here. Thanks. So, thank you so much. Again, my name is Elizabeth Kim, Ms. Washington Universe, transcontinental 2022. And I am going to compete in Georgia in August to be Ms. Universe. Today, I want to talk about pro-healing for wrong choices. What that means by that. It's not political thing at all. It's talking about reaching out to our neighbors who are hurting, and say, "It's okay. I've been there. I've been homeless. It's okay." It's okay. Let me buy grocery for you. I love you. It's okay you got pregnant out of wedlock. It's okay, my friend. Let me buy you lunch. You're homeless? It's okay, my friend. You can stay with me." It's my personal story, so nobody can judge me. I know that there's division in the society right now. Roe v. Wade, Black Lives Matter, and all the things that I cannot even spell it out. But what I can tell you right now is that there's healing and restoration when there's true love in the society. That's what I felt when I was pregnant out of wedlock. Care Net came to me and told me it's okay, that I am not a horrible person, and my parents completely cut me off from South Korea. I love my parents, but they said it's okay. I can do this. I don't have to over my child out of fear. They bought me grocery, my friends, and they pray with me, and they told me Jesus Christ loves me. I did not know who he was. You don't have to agree with me, but because they helped me, I could choose life, I could choose to be healed and choose to love. And when shame and guilt came to me, Christ told me, "No." So I just want to spread the love. And if you want to message me, ElizabethKimMinistry.com. I want to pray with you. I want to encourage you. There's healing, there's forgiveness. We can do, do this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kim. I think I know that-
Can I make a comment, please?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, this is Lydia. May I make a comment?
Please, go ahead, Ms. Councilmember.
Yes. I wanted to congratulate Ms. Washington. I'm sorry I didn't get your name, but Ms. Devine Williams also ran for the same, in the same competition, and she came in fourth. She's also from Federalway. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize that as well. But congratulations to you, and I just hope and pray that you do well your next competition. So just wanted to bring that up, that we had, I didn't know, but we had two people in the competition. So that's great.
Thank you. I, I think Ms. Kim just wanted to come here and share her platform with us. But thank you, thank you very much, Councilmember. So that's all the pink sheets we have this evening. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak? Oh, Ms. Kim, did you want to get a picture with the council?
Yes, if that's okay.
Okay. Is that all right? Okay, we'll come down here in the front with you.
Or may I just go over there? We'll, we'll come down out front here.
Uh huh.
Congratulations, Ms. Universe. We're in the building. Here's my neighbor.
You're fine.
Make sure Federalway's showing it.
Yeah, thanks. Ready?
Okay, on three, smile. We've got lots of photographers here.
One, two, three, blink.
Okay. We've got lots of good cameras.
Jeffrey, can you, oh, camera first.
Yeah, one, two, three. All right. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very, very much.
Okay, now we're moving on with the agenda. We now have presentations. Deputy Chief Kyle Sumter.
Thomas. And I'm so glad you're here. The whole club, then. Thomas?
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Thomas. With this beautiful weather that we have out there today, it's easy to see Independence Day is right around the corner, and with that, you're probably already experiencing some personal use of fireworks. We'll get into why it is legalized by the Federalway City Council, but as a reminder to everybody who is watching this at home or who will see it on YouTube, all personal use of fireworks are illegal in the city limits of Federalway. Not just the city limits of Federalway, but this is a reminder that it was, this dangerous activity was legalized by the people for the people for several different reasons. I'll give you at least four reasons. First of all, the noise. If you've got a pet at home, you know that's a big deal to your pet. Also, there are people who experienced trauma at some point in their life associated with the loud noise. It might be military veterans and so forth, and it becomes a triggering event for them. Also, it makes a huge mess, both in the air and on the ground. But what about this one? Probably the most important. Fires, of course, too. We always get several fires during the fireworks season in the middle of the summer. But back to injuries, you know that yesterday, about this time yesterday, 24 hours ago, a 14-year-old kid playing with a firework at a school where fireworks are prohibited, not just illegal, but also prohibited on school property, blew apart his hand. And although responders gathered up what was left and sent it with medics to the hospital, it was not recoverable. And so here we are the very next day with that poor kid now missing a hand over this right here. And that's why it's illegal, to protect good people. Here's what I've decided I'm going to do. Back to injuries. I can show somehow, we all, we have causes, and we have respects we would like to show in a variety of ways that we conjecture to show respect. I'm going to show some kind of remembrance for this kid, some kind of respect for him by not touching fireworks this season. I have the choice still. Moving on, we're not alone. Here's a list of several cities in Washington for whom fireworks are illegal. And of course, as of this year, all of unincorporated King County, where it seems to have been a free-for-all for many decades, illegal now for the first time in unincorporated King County. To change a strongly-held American tradition, everybody needs to engage in it. I mentioned the schools, of course, they post these at their properties, reminding people, "No fireworks on their property, please." We would love to see homeowners associations and multifamily housings post signs, take enforcement action in their civil capacity to enforce rules on their property. That would be a big help. Here is the ordinance as it sits in Federalway. You see that it's a $300 fine, but the number-one goal of law enforcement is voluntary compliance. And that's what we are hoping for. So we will do, like we do each year, a press release, hoping that the Federalway Mirror will publish something. Our Facebook, Twitter, Safe Cities, all of those accounts will have reminders. And again, I will make this offer. I'll put my email address up here shortly. It'll be the last slide. If you will send an email to me about your chronic violating firework neighbor, if they are still living in that house next door this year, if you will send an email to me, I will make sure they get a friendly knock from a police officer asking them to comply this year. And then, of course, where none of that works, we will have extra patrols out there surrounding the Fourth of July, dropping $300 tickets and confiscating fireworks whenever we can prove the case. There we are again with that. But we will be out there to every degree possible. So if you will email me by June 30th at that email address right there that is on the screen, I will make sure your friendly neighbor gets a friendly visit. Now, when you have fireworks in progress, would you please call that phone number right there, 253-835-2121, and we will have some of our fireworks enforcement officers out there. And that is where we are at for this season. I'll be back in a couple of weeks to talk about enforcement efforts.
Thank, thank you very much, Deputy Chief.
My pleasure.
So just for everybody to remember, on the Fourth of July, we will be having our fireworks display at Celebration Park. I believe the park will open about 4:00 p.m., and then the fireworks, they'll have booths and all sorts of things for the kids to play on. And then around 10:00 p.m. or when it's dusk, that's when the fireworks will start. And it's, it's a very wonderful show, so hope you can all make it for the legal, safe, sane fireworks at Celebration Park. So thank you. I see Deputy Mayor Honda has her hand up.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to remind everyone that fireworks cause fires, and we have experienced two fires in my backyard due to fireworks. It's very frightening, it's very scary, and it takes the first responders away from other things that they need to be doing, fighting a fire that should never have been started. So I would really encourage people to follow the law and to please stay away from fireworks. Also, for the first time, this is the first year that King County is not allowing fireworks. And I don't know if, I know that the sheriffs respond to unincorporated King County, so please go ahead and, and call and report. You know, if you, if you see someone doing fireworks in an unincorporated King County, and I'm sure that the chief would say to call and report here in Federalway, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Stay safe, please.
Yes. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. All right, I don't see any other hands up, and I don't-
I have questions.
Yes, sir, would you like to come to the podium? And, and when you're done, would you fill out a pink sheet, please?
I'm trying, I don't do fireworks, but I'm trying to understand. So we're going to have a fireworks show-
Yes.
-at Celebration Park, but fireworks are prohibited in Federalway?
No, it's, it's a professional, it's not anywhere where the kids can get their hands on them.
Oh, okay, got it.
Uh huh, thank you very much.
I was just asking.
That's okay, thank you very much. There may have been people wondering about that. That's, that's a good question. Thank you. Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. And now we have a presentation. Jeffrey Tancredi, would you come to the podium? This is the first day of summer, and on the first day of summer, there are cities all over the nation who have started having something called Make Music Day. And Jeffrey is here to accept the presentation on behalf of Jan Barber, who is at Town Square Park right now, has been there since 3:00. I was there at 3:00, opening the session. And a wonderful event with a lot of children coming to booths and to play with musical instruments. And I'm hoping someday that that entire park will be filled with citizens and people who are volunteering to, of their time to help children learn how to play a musical instrument. And so, thank you, Jeffrey. I'm going to read this presentation and give it to you, make a presentation to you, and you can say a few words afterward if you wish. So proclamation Make Music Federalway Day, whereas Make Music Federalway is a wonderful one-day festival that celebrates the ability of everyone to make music, presented locally by the City of Federalway, the Federalway Lions Club, the library's located at 320th and First Avenue South, and the Federalway Arts Commission. And whereas Make Music Federalway is a day of music-making in public spaces all throughout the City of Federalway, all completely free for musicians and audiences alike, and whereas the Fourth Annual Make Music Federalway will be celebrated, is being celebrated today, Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, inspired by local artists, celebrating the joyfulness music brings to our lives. And whereas Make Music Federalway joins a national group of make-music cities that includes New York, Los Angeles, Chicago, Detroit, and Philadelphia. And whereas Make Music Federalway involves musicians, bands, and ensembles from a diverse array of styles and genre, creating an opportunity to unite through the language of music. And whereas on June 21st, 2022, Make Music Federalway will celebrate its fourth event as people of all ages, music genres, and ability levels, from students and amateurs to professionals, gather at the Performing Arts and Events Center Plaza from 3:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. and throughout the day in the City of Federalway to engage in music-making. Now therefore, the undersigned mayor and council of the City of Federalway do hereby proclaim June 21st, 2022, as Make Music Federalway Day, and encourage all citizens of the City of Federalway to celebrate the joy of making music. Signed this day and signed by all seven councilmembers. And I want to say, it's a wonderful event, a community event, to bring our community together. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I accept this for Jan Barber. I know she lives in my neighborhood, so I told her I would gladly accept this for her. And I know she does a lot of work, a lot of things, volunteering, Lions Club, Make Music. So she's very much involved, and so be happy to get this to her. Thank you.
Thank you. She's over at the park right now with a straw hat on and a kind of a colonial costume and having a wonderful time. Thank you very much, Jeff.
I would like to also thank Jan Barber and the Lions Club for this program. Even during the midst of the pandemic, when it was pouring down rain, they were out supporting this program and trying to get people to not only listen to music, but to learn how to play music, even adults. And so without Jan and her vision for doing this, we wouldn't have this program. So thank you very much, Jan, and the Federalway Lions Club.
And the Colonians were there, too.
Yeah, and I would just like to, I, I have a passion for music, some of you know that, but I would like to suggest that in future years, that some way it be coordinated so that it is not on the night of a council meeting, so the city council can attend. It's always on June 21st. That's the International Day for Make Music. So it, it isn't always on a council night. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for clarifying that. All right. Now we're moving forward to council committee and regional committee reports. We'll begin with Parks, Recreation, and Human Services, and that's Councilmember Jack Walsh.
All right. Several items on the consent agenda this evening were from our last committee meeting. Other than that, our next committee meeting will be on July 12th. And as was mentioned earlier, one of the things that will be on the agenda is the, is the shopping cart issue.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
If I, on this issue, so we've, we've presented on this issue at, at the LUTC before, and then at the full council. Now we're going back to Parks. Is there a direction that you could give staff on what you're looking for, for us to present at this meeting, or is this just going to be initiated by the committee, and then we'll just have a discussion? Basically, what do you want us to bring to the, to the agenda item?
You know, I, I think that what really needs to be brought is not just a report on what's been, what the city's been doing, but a, an idea of something that we can do, some ordinance that at least has a, that, that we can do more to enforce it. And so, not on a report on what has been, but what can be.
Okay. So more on enforcement, then, in, both in the field and from the stores as well? Or do you not want to touch the stores?
Yeah, I, I think the stores are fine. I think the stores are fine. But, you know, one of the things is, you know, what, what the, the, the officers can do to enforce it and bring things to be prosecuted, you know, and, and how, you know, and to plan for that.
Can I add one thing?
Go ahead, Councilmember Dopey.
If I could add one thing from my perspective, I would like to see the council come to you and say, "This is what we want to do," and you tell us why we can't do it, so that we can actually put some teeth into something. Instead of talking about it, we may come back and say, "X, Y, Z, this is what we want done since we set the policy." Then the- Or is this just going to be initiated by the committee and then we'll just have a discussion? Basically, what do you want us to bring to the agenda item?
You know, I think that what really needs to be brought is not just a report on what's been, what the city's been doing, but an idea of something that we can do, some ordinance that at least has a, that we can do more to enforce it. And so not on a report on what has been, but what can be.
So more on enforcement than in, both in the field and from the stores as well? Or do you not want to touch the stores?
Yeah, I think the stores are fine. I think the stores are fine. But, you know, one of the things is, you know, what the officers can do to enforce it and then bring things to be prosecuted, you know? And how, you know, and to plan for that.
Go ahead, Councilmember Doffey.
If I could add one thing from my perspective, I would like to see the council come to you and say, this is what we want to do, and you tell us why we can't do it, so that we can actually put some teeth into something instead of talking about it. We may come back and say, X, Y, Z, this is what we want done since we set the policy. Then the staff goes through and says, okay, this is why you can do this, why you can't do this, and this is how the line works, so we can get it accomplished. A little more than staff report.
Councilmember Norton.
Thank you. I thought that we didn't have power to enforce anything, any ordinances. I thought that that came straight from the mayor. I thought that we just set policies and suggested budget, and then the mayor has all the power. He's a strong mayor. So is that correct?
So, yeah, the mayor through his staff would enforce the ordinances that you pass. And so if there is a concern about how the enforcement is being done, that's something that you can discuss, or if there's different ways to enforce it, or if you want information on how enforcement is working or how it's not working, that's within your purview.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sebada Dawson or Deputy Mayor, any suggestions? Nope, seeing none. Thank you very much. Land use.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Doffey.
Thank you, Council President. We have a few things on the consent agenda from land use. We have coming up in July, some contracts we'll be approving. And the big thing on our topic for the first part of land use is we've asked to start to review fees that are charged by the school district and by other organizations, so we can get a better idea of how we're going to mitigate some of those if we are, or change them as we look to grow the downtown and change the structure of Federal Way for growth. So that will probably be, in my opinion, the biggest topic we have. We have a bunch of contracts we'll be talking about. But we will have one part of a presentation on what the school districts are charging for fees and other different things that could hinder or increase growth in our city.
Oh, and may I just follow up with that, Councilmember Doffey, that I did speak with Superintendent Danny Pfeifer, who said that they are, they they do not want to accept school impact fees this year. They think that they don't need them because they've overbuilt. And so I've asked for an email to be sent back to staff so that we know what to do, because we have an ordinance or it's part of our fees for the year, and we can't just stop, we need to change that fee structure. So there should be an email coming from them shortly. Thank you very much, Councilmember Doffey. Now we're, finance is not on the agenda, because Mr., Councilmember Tran is not here this evening. Councilmember Sebada Dawson, did you want to talk about lodging tax?
Yes, please. Thank you, Council President Honda, I mean, Council President Boozmar. So we had our first meeting after so many months of not having one, this month on the 8th. And we reviewed an application for funding. And so the recommendation is coming to FedRAC to the next meeting and then coming to council for approval. So there's a recommendation that is pending, and then it'll come before the council. So that's all I have for now, and our next meeting is going to be the first Wednesday in July. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So I've been busy since our last meeting. On June 8th, we had a pick meeting, which they're still being held on Zoom. And we talked about the conservation futures ballot measure, which King County Council will be putting on the ballot if they haven't already decided to do that. King County utility rates, which may be increasing, and the clean water planning guiding principles, which is something that SCA is just getting started on. Well, pushing out to cities. They've been working on this for a little bit. On that day, I also attended the Association of Washington Cities Large City Advisory Committee. And we talked, started talking about legislation and what legislation issues we would like AWC to be working on for the upcoming sessions. So if any council members have any ideas that you'd like me to share with the AWC, please let me know. The sooner the better, because they are already planning on what's going to happen next year, what they're going to be working on. We had the Chamber of Commerce quarterly meeting, which is held every few months between the Chamber of Commerce and the mayor, council, and business members. And last week, Councilmember Sebada Dawson and I attended the National Foundation of Women Legislators Conference on Healthcare in Washington DC, which was really interesting. I found a very interesting way to get healthcare, which does not involve insurance for those people who don't want to use an insurance company. And it's legal in 30 some states, not yet here in Washington. But it was a very interesting idea, and I am going to research it a little bit more and see if maybe that's something that we'd like to start here in Washington, if the legislature would allow it. And then today, we had skateboard meeting. And usually that has been when it was in person, it was held at C-Tech City Hall. Today was our first in-person meeting, you know, since March of 2020. And it was also on Zoom. And we held it here at the City Hall in Federal Way. So I'd like to thank all of the staff for quickly putting that together. We were asked to hold it here, I think, on Thursday. But there were two things that were presented today that were really interesting. One is the Zero Youth Fair on September 1st. Metro will start a program where 18 and under do not have to pay any fares. They initially don't even need to have an ORC card to show that they're 18 and under. They just need to tell the driver. And it sounds like Sound Transit will be starting that program earlier, perhaps during the summer. What caught my interest was that the state of Washington is giving Metro $31 million per year for the next 16 years to run this program. And Sound Transit was at the meeting today a representative, but did not, was not able to tell me how much money Sound Transit will be getting from the state to run this program. And then we also had a discussion on South King County Flexible Services with Metro. When light rail starts, some of our best routes are going to be cut. And simply because that's what happens when light rail comes to your town. And there are some cities right now that are doing pilot programs on having bus service from perhaps your home to the transit center. And Federal Way will be a city that is, will have a pilot program like that, too, when light rail starts. So as it was explained to me today, if you wanted to get to the transit station and you don't want to drive, you could call a number or use an app and get a reservation to have a small bus or a vehicle come to your home or wherever you are and take you to a transit station. And the deal with it is that you have to, at one point, you either end at a transit station or you start at a transit station. And it costs the same as the metro fare, so it is something that people will have to pay for. But it's something that I was really excited to hear about, because I know when light rail gets here, people are going to want to use it. But as normal, there won't be enough parking. And this is one way to let your car stay at home, and you can still get to light rail and use light rail. So I found that to be really interesting, and I'm really excited to learn more about it and to have that service offered for our citizens. So that was, and today, as you can see, I'm not there. I am down in Vancouver at the Association of Washington Cities Annual Conference. It's the first in-person conference since 20, no, since 2019. So it's pretty exciting to be down here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Honda. Very good information. And now for my council president report. As we've said, there will be two very interesting meetings coming up that many of you might want to participate in. It'll be the next land use meeting and then the next Parks meeting. Land use will hopefully be talking a little bit about, Councilmember Walsh and I went to Seattle King County Board of Realtors, kind of a presentation on something called missing middle housing. So that's going to be the missing middle housing for people who are either just starting out or people who can't find regular housing. And so at the conference in, then, and Lydia was there, too, Councilmember Sebada Dawson. And at the conference that you're at, Deputy Mayor Honda and Lydia, they will be talking about the very same thing, missing middle housing. So that should be tomorrow. I'll be joining you. And hopefully, we'll learn a little bit more about that that we'll be then discussing at our land use meeting. So thank you very much. And that's the end of our reports, and now we're moving on to the consent agenda. Listed, items listed on the consent agenda have previously been reviewed in their entirety by a council committee of three members and brought before full council for approval. All items are enacted by one motion. Individual items may be removed by a council member for separate discussion and subsequent motion. Is there approval of items A through H?
I move approval of items A through H on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, okay. I was going to do that, but thank you very much.
Sorry, Linda asked me to do it.
Oh, well, okay, whatever. Thank you.
Whatever works. Thank you. Thank you very much. I didn't know if you had your agenda in front of you there, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. So, all right, we've had a motion in a second to move approval of items A through H. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion approved unanimously. Thank you so much. So now we're moving on to a public hearing. And this is a point where we do have public comment at the end of the public hearing. This is regarding Resolution 2023-28, Transportation Improvement Project, TIP. And I see Mr. Rick Perez is here. How many years have you been with the city, Rick?
That would be 26.
Well, congratulations.
At the end of this month.
Yeah, thank you very much.
So, all right, thank you. Let's see, where is my presentation? That's not it. There it is. Okay. And, okay. Okay, all right. Pardon? Yeah, Thomas to the rescue again. All right, so. There we go. All right, thank you and good evening. For the record, Rick Perez, City Traffic Engineer, here to present our transportation improvement plan for the next six years. The policy question is, should the council authorize staff to proceed with the adoption of the 2023 through 2028 City of Federal Way Transportation Improvement Plan? So the TIP, as we call it, or the TIP, it outlines a six-year plan for transportation-related capital projects. It is updated annually. It is a requirement for grant eligibility for transportation projects. Also needs to be financially constrained, in that we have to have a pretty reasonable chance of getting the first three years funded and a reasonable chance of the next three years. So also needs to conform to air quality requirements and is adopted at, after a public hearing. So prioritization criteria we use to develop the TIP is a council-adoptioned policy for level of service improvement and three different measures of safety. Whether a project is supportive of high occupancy vehicles, whether it's supportive of non-motorized transportation, level of community support, air quality conformance, ease of implementation, and a benefit cost ratio. And this map outlines what that looks like. Green being non-motorized projects. The blue is overlay projects. And we have some intersection improvement projects in red. And the purple ones are corridor widening projects. And there's several citywide projects listed as well. So I'd like to describe a little bit about what we've already completed. And that is, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself. We upgraded the horizontal curve warning signs throughout the city to meet current standards, which had been revised a few years ago. The Southwest 320th overlay between 3rd Place Southwest and 11th Avenue Southwest. The 356th Street overlay between 4th Place Southwest and 15th Avenue Southwest. The completion of the citywide Greenway Plan, which provided wayfinding signs for non-motorized users throughout the city. And a Safe Routes to School project on Dash Point Road between 9th and 11th Place South. So those projects are coming off the TIP because they are now completed. So some new projects being proposed is citywide high-friction surface treatments. This is to improve skid resistance on sharp curves throughout the city. And we apparently are on a short list under that grant program for three of the locations that we submitted for. A new project would be, as part of the City Center Access Project, it would be an extension of the BPA Trail that would basically provide a multi-use path along 324th between Pacific Highway South and 23rd Avenue South, and then extending up 23rd Avenue South to 320th Street to connect the BPA Trail to the Light Rail Station. A 320th Street overlay between 1st Avenue South and SR 99, which appears we will get grant funding for. 324th Street overlay from 11th Place South to Highway 99, and that one is a maybe. Then we also are proposing a citywide project to provide sidewalk, complete sidewalk gaps that, over the years, as development occurs, we usually require frontage improvements. If there's not enough justification to do that, we will often ask developers to at least provide, sign an agreement that they would not protest the formation of a local improvement district. And this would allow us to move forward with those local improvement districts in order to complete those sidewalk gaps. So options considered is, one, to approve the resolution adopting the transportation improvement plan as presented. Or, two, do not approve the draft document and provide direction to staff. The mayor's recommendation and also Land Use and Transportation Committee's recommendation was to approve that resolution as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Rick. Are there any questions by council? We do have some public comment. And I can't see on the screen if Deputy Mayor, if you have your hand up, or Councilmember Sebada Dawson.
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, let's move forward with the public comment. And then if council has any other questions, go for it. Rick, we're going to move forward with the public comment now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Jeff Tancredi? Just say whether you're from Federal Way and just kind of identify yourself. Thank you.
Jeff Tancredi, Federal Way resident, 25 years. Thank you. So I was going to comment about the skate park. I thought that was going to- I thought that was going to be addressed. Is that, am I out of turn to bring that up?
Yes, that's actually, we won't be taking public comment tonight on that. That's the next item on the agenda.
Okay. So can I save it for that?
Well, next meeting you could speak about that.
Oh, the next...
Yeah, because this is public comment only on the Transportation Improvement Plan for the next six years. That's what this item is on.
Okay, I see.
Thank you very much.
All righty.
Okay, Ken Levens, is yours also on the...
Ken Levens, Federal Way. I just want to congratulate you for being here and for that long, and we appreciate all the work that you do for our city. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you. So we'll save your comments then for next council meeting. Council, is there, are there any questions? Councilmember Dolphy.
Yeah, I move approval of the items. Excuse me. Turn it back. Turn it back on. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Perez for bringing this to land use and the staff. They've worked very hard to put a six-year plan together. This is a lot of work. And over the years, we see these projects get done, so that really shows that we got a diligent staff carrying it out and getting grants, which is really very good. I remember working with Rick, I don't know, was it 25 years ago or whatever, when I was a young kid, too. But I want to...
So just before you go forward, I need to close the public hearing.
Oh, close the public hearing, and then I'll make the motion.
Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing now. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion to close the public hearing.
And I'll second it.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So, thank you.
Okay. So now I will move to approve the proposed resolution of the TIP.
I second it.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, now we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the council business. This is simply only for information tonight, and we're going to have, this is regarding the joint use, operation, and maintenance facility site selection. And this is not the Sound Transit Operation Maintenance. This is actually our city's own maintenance and operations site facility. And I see Thomas is coming to the podium, and we must have something going on technically here.
Happy to help.
When he comes out of his little room in the back there, you know something's going on.
It's getting going.
There we go.
Council President, I'd just like to ask one question as we're getting ready. Since this is going to be moved to the next, in two weeks, when everybody's back at the dais, are we going to not ask questions today? We're just going to have a presentation?
We're just a presentation only.
So there won't be any questions from the council or anybody? This is for presentation only?
Yeah, just a presentation.
All right. Good evening, Council President, Deputy Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present the recommended preferred site.
So this is Desiree Rinkler. She is our Deputy Public Works Director.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yes, I'm here to present the preferred alternative for the site for the joint use operation/maintenance facility. So the policy question is, should council select the preferred site for the new joint use operation/maintenance facility and authorize $250,000 in expenditures from unallocated capital improvement funds to advance preliminary design? So, the project need. The facilities that our current operation and maintenance folks use, both would be in our Parks Department, Public Works Department, exist over multiple locations. Primary one being at the Steel Lake Maintenance Facility located at 28th Avenue South and This is the main facility. One of the biggest issues we have is that it's extremely undersized. As you can see in the picture, you can see that we have equipment that is stacked at least three deep, and that is not just what's visible, but also undercover. So it's every morning exercise to be as efficient as possible, but a lot of jockeying around happens in order to get the equipment materials out that are needed every day. It's upward of an hour of crew out, each crew hour, crew loses an hour every day trying to jockey in and out their materials and equipment. In addition, there's just inadequate crew facilities. We are, when everyone was located at the Steel Lake Maintenance Facility, we were actually over the size of the facility in terms of occupancy. We like to get the crew together for not just, you know, operations every day, but we like to get them together to train. If we need to do that near the equipment and the materials that we use, we actually have to set up shop in the shop. So just completely inadequate facilities that we have for our crews. It's near impossible when we have to be able to run snow and ice operations, and we have all the crew there to be able to have what we call changeover muster meetings when we get everybody together so that the previous crew can communicate with the next crew what they saw, the shape of the equipment, that type of thing. That stuff occurs outside, in the weather, undercover, in various locations. We just can't get everybody inside in order to be able to work together and communicate. Another need for this project is security. In the past three years on our main facility, we have had 17 breakwinds. Over $250,000 of equipment has been lost and damaged. That equates to over 600 crew hours lost, basically because either they show up and they've got no equipment to work with, and then they got to go and spend the time to actually get it replaced. In addition, it's asset protection. As you saw in that picture, a lot of equipment has to sit out in the open. Some is made to sit out in the open, some is not made to sit out in the open. Again, there's theft, there's vandalism. We have stolen catalytic converters, batteries, fuel. We have maintenance issues with the equipment is sitting outside. The hydraulic systems are subject to freeze damage, sun damage, rain, rains a little bit around here, water getting in areas that it's not supposed to be in because we don't have adequate coverage of our equipment. And that reduces the lifespan of the equipment, five to 35% reduction in lifespan. And this equipment, some of it's not cheap. We spent over half a million dollars buying a Vector, you know, truck. And, you know, losing that much of a lifespan because we're not adequately protecting it is not a very good use of city funds. So, previously in May 2020, we were told to go out and look for the best site, determine what the needs were for the size of the site and what was needed in it. In May of 2021, we briefed council on those programming results. We confirmed the criteria with the city council on the site selection criteria. And so, May 2021 to February 2022, we went out and tried to find that site that's needed. We finalized a report. We actually completed due diligence on a potential property acquisition, then ended up following through. May 2022, we updated council on the final site selection report and outline of the next steps. And here we are in June, hopefully to select the preferred site. So again, what programming is, is we look at the current staffing, we look at the current equipment, we look at the current material storage needs, everything, and put it together to determine how much area do we need for both of our people and our equipment and our materials. And what we determine is we need a 10 to 12 acre site, assuming that it's flat. There needs to be an operation and maintenance facility, again, for staff offices, crew rooms, lunch muster area, training conference room space, locker rooms. There needs to be a shop in order to be able to both do work and store our equipment, adequate parking, covered in open storage. In addition, we identified things that we don't currently do today, or we contract out to do. One of those things, well, those things being fleet maintenance, we contract that out. We wanted to make sure we have space to be able to take that in, in the future if we'd like. Fueling, we get our fuel through contract with the school district. And currently, we contract with King County to do our traffic maintenance, both signs and signals. So when we looked for the property, the criteria was that it should be somewhat centralized. So west of I-5, between 304th and 358th, between 11th Avenue Southwest and 28th Avenue South. Land use, we wanted to make sure was ideally compatible with surrounding land use. We wanted to minimize property impacts. And we wanted to look at opportunity costs. We can go and use a great piece of property for the purpose of an operation and maintenance facility, but we would take it away from being used as something else. So sites included the existing site. We took a look at any city-owned properties to see if they would be appropriate. We went to try to find 10 to 11 acre parcels that were available, whether on the market or not, and those are extremely hard to come by. And then the other option would be to consolidate multiple properties in order to get to 10 to 11 acres, but that's also hard to come by, and it would be more costly. So again, the boundaries that we were looking at are roughly shown inside of this red square-ish thing. So in order to get from one side of the city to the other, both north or south, east, west, it's about 15 minutes if you're, no traffic, right? And when you're doing operations, it's very hard, especially say, snow and ice, and you have central storage for materials, you have central area for fueling, equipment, maintenance, all of that. If you're stuck on one end of the city or the other, it becomes rather inefficient in order to do the work. Our other concern is that, you know, majority of our city is on the west side of I-5, and having to be able to service the majority of the city and having to cross something that has bridges in an area like this, where it's prone to potential earthquakes and whatnot, we wanted to make sure we're able to serve the majority of our city. So there's bridges on I-5. There's also bridges on 509 as well that we want to be able to minimize that impact. So now to the sites. Site one is the existing site. The existing site is about six acres, so we would have to double the size and go north in order to get that 10 to 12 acres needed. The pros is the existing site, it's a somewhat now half at least existing use. There's minimal natural environment impacts. And then as far as impacting adjacent properties, we do have Interstate 5 on one side. The cons are, it would take eight to 10 million dollars to purchase the additional property. The site's not level. We already have issues with our current site not being level, that we would need to either, you know, more costly site development to get done. Construction staging would be a little challenging because we'd be operating while we're trying to build and kind of flip-flop half at a time. And then the apartments to the south, which haven't been the greatest of neighbors necessarily, and so that's not a compatible use. And then, you know, purchasing property, you don't want to go into lightly. These are people's homes, you know, that they have, that they enjoy. And so buying property is not an easy thing to do, but it is something that would be available to us if this was a chosen site. So site two, and looking at all the city properties, the property that made the most sense is actually kitty corner of the existing shop. So it's the southwest corner of 28th Avenue Southwest and South 312th. It is the property called Steel Lake Park Annex. It's south of that park. It is a city-owned property. It's a flat site. It does have compatible surrounding land use to the south. The school property is to the south. The cons are, there would be loss of park amenities, but those could be mitigated. And I have a slide later on that shows that. So site three, we did find a property that was 10 to 12 acres located at 1st and 320th. It's not on the market. It's just raw undeveloped land. So the pros are, there would be no impacts to existing developed use. It's got good arterial access, 1st Avenue, 320th. The cons are, it would be estimated over $16 million to purchase the property. There is some wetland potential there that would have to be mitigated or worked around. There is surrounding residential use. There's enough property that could be buffered, but there is, again, residential surrounding use. And then this would be one of those properties that would be a loss opportunity for another So looking at the cost summary per site, site one, which again is the existing, is our existing operation and maintenance facility site, the construction would be 32 million. It would cost another nine million to get the full size that we needed to a total cost of 41 million. That is $7 million more than the preferred alternative, which is actually site two, Steel Lake Park Annex. The construction costs plus the mitigation costs would be around $34 million. And then the private property, undeveloped property, would be 34 million with a $16 million land cost, for a total of $50 million, which is $16 million over the recommended preferred So the preferred site is site two. It's the least cost, given that it is a city-owned property. There's no property acquisition or displacements required. It is a level site. It would be easy construction staging since you're away from existing operations. It has compatible surrounding use and buffer, and there are mitigatable park impacts. So this is, again, is site two, and recognizing that there are impacts, again, that we could mitigate. So there is parking that is used as overflow for Steel Lake Park that we would build back in, just look more and potentially have even more parking. I know the soccer field is very popular and has its own parking issues, as well as the park in the summertime across the street, that we could potentially add a benefit for with the parking. The skate park would be replaced. The decision on where that would be has not been made, but we would make sure that that got replaced. A recommendation was made to implement and put in a perimeter walking path around the full site. This would help with both maintenance. It would provide also kind of a security buffer and then a nice amenity for the public. And then there are two small baseball fields that would also be replaced as part of the Options considered is to select site two, the southwest corner of South 312th Street and 28th Avenue South, as a preferred location for the new joint use operation and maintenance facility, and authorize $250,000 in expenditures from unallocated capital improvement funds, which is Funds 401 and Fund 306, to advance preliminary design. Or option two, select an alternative site as a preferred location for the new operation/maintenance facility and authorize $250,000 in expenditures to advance preliminary design. And the mayor recommends option one, which is select site two as the preferred alternative. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
We were just going to have this as a presentation this evening. Some of our council members are not here. The mayor and Councilmember Tran are not even online. And so this is really a presentation for the community to look this over for the next couple of weeks, and it'll be on the agenda on our next council meeting. Which should be about July 7th, maybe? When is the next meeting?
I think it's July 5th.
July 5th. Thank you very much, Desiree. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yes.
President, I need to move to postpone this item to July 5th, 2020, 22 council meetings so we can make a decision and vote on it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, to postpone this to the July 5th council meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. So to the community, if you would like to weigh in on this, you're welcome to send us emails or come to the next council meeting and tell us what you think. So now we're moving on to ordinances, the second reading and enactment. Ms. Partney, did you want to go ahead and read that?
Council Bill 826, 2021, 2022, biennial budget amendment and ordinance of the City of Federway, Washington relating to amending the 2021, 2022 biennial budget.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion, council? Councilmember Dovi?
No, I moved to approval the proposed ordinance.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed ordinance. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Well, now we're moving forward to have you all be able to go home and enjoy some part of this evening yet. I think Ms. Councilmember Norton wants to go home and see a little puppy she's got. It's little. It's big as a house. I think it's taking over her house.
My baby.
All right. Council reports. Should we start with Ms. Councilmember Norton with the reports?
I would like to thank all of the groups that have come together and helped me with my little side project that I've got going with the community. I really appreciate everyone who's involved with that. I also had a great time at Juneteenth, the festival that took place on Saturday. It was wonderful seeing all the local business people who were there selling their items and their food and everything. It was so much fun. And I also enjoyed the Juneteenth flag raising. That was great. So I appreciate the city for doing that for the African-American community.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Walsh.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, we have an amazing community here. The number of volunteers, I was just thinking about the, you know, Cheryl Hurst was being recognized and the amazing work that she has done, and there are so many people who support her with that effort and so many other great efforts in Federal Way. You know, I volunteer at the Senior Center Food Bank, and there's probably close to two dozen people that are just at that one little organization. If you add up all the different community efforts that are operated by volunteers, I mean, there's literally hundreds and hundreds of people in Federal Way that volunteer. I mean, the work that the stand-up group does in cleaning things up and so many, many other groups. Multi-service center has volunteers there and so many different things that the Kiwanis and Lions and Rotary and so many other groups do. We live in an absolutely amazing community, and I want to give a big shout out to all of the volunteers who make it such an incredible community. And I think that's.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to going home early.
Councilmember Dovi?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make a comment today. I was at one of our local stores buying some bird food. My birds like Sue it, so I buy it all the time. And as I'm walking in, there's this boy scout there, and he's got his life badge on, so that means he's close to being an eagle. So I asked him about his eagle project, and he said, you know, I built a portable library at Panther Lake. So I asked him, how did that go? And he said, the city was amazing in helping me build this library at the Panther Lake walking area. So I thought that was good. So that's a shout out to the Parks Department for helping this young man do his eagle project. And then he said that he was in Troop 336. And I think I was actually in that troop when I was in high school in 1971. So anyway, so another young man in Federal Way becoming an Eagle Scout, giving back to our community. The Parks Department helped him. So I thought that was just a good story of how Federal Way has got great people here and doing great things.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Sevad Dawson, did you have a report?
Yeah. Thank you so much for the opportunity, and I too am at AWC Conference. And there's some great topics here that we are going to be covering and activities that we're going to be doing, so I look forward to this week's conference. And with that, I end my comment. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So I'd like to talk about the 33rd Annual Flag Day. We celebrated Flag Day on Saturday, June 11th, at the Federal Way Farmers Market. And I'd like to thank the following people and organizations who helped this be successful. The Sound Celebration Quartet, Bob Wilkie, Dan Ray, Todd Jameson, and Jim Burbage, Pastor Dan Larson. We had two speakers, Steve Wiest from Woodman Life. If you ever need American flags, please contact Woodman Life or Steve Wiest, and they will get you American flags for free. No cost to you. The second speaker was Deborah Wood, who is Bob Derrigan, read a poem. Wouldn't be Flag Day without a poem by Bob Derrigan. We had flag folding, a flag folding demonstration by the Charles C. Rolls, VFW, post 2886. Craig Cummings, Stuart Austin, and Steve White were the members who folded the flag. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Rose Eel, who let the Federal Way Serpentumist Club hold the program at the Farmers Market. Rose is one of our longest standing members of the Federal Way Serpentumist Club, and it was pretty special to be at the Farmers Market. And I'd like to thank the Federal Way Serpentumist Club members for all the, this usually is held at the Aquatics Flight, and hopefully we'll be back there next year. I'd like to thank the staff once again for setting up the chamber today for skateboard. It was short notice. You did an amazing job. And Stephanie from King County Metro said that it was a meeting where, you know, it was both Zoom and in person, that we didn't have any problems technically. And she has never been to a meeting that we haven't had, that there weren't problems technically when you're trying to do a meeting that's both Zoom and in person. So thank you very much to all the staff who helped set that up and make it possible. I really appreciate your help. I encourage the public to let council know what you think about the operations and maintenance yard for parks and public works. We're trying to make a decision on where this facility is going to go. It's going to serve the city for the next 40 years or more. And we'd like your opinion. We haven't heard from anyone in the public right now, and it's really important that we hear your opinions so that we know where the public stands on this and what you think. So please, send emails, give us a call, let us know. This is a very important decision that will be a big part of Federal Way for years and years to come. And so we really would like your opinion. And the Kiwanis Annual Salmon Bake is back in person this year. We're really excited. The last two years, we've been doing a drive up, and we give you your meal, and off you go. Oh, I forgot to, for Flag Day, I forgot to thank the Boy Scout in Pack, Troop 307. They meet at St. Luke's, and they were a big part of Flag Day. I'm so sorry, I forgot you guys. Thank you so much. The Kiwanis Salmon Bake, July 22nd, which is a Friday, from 4:00 to 8:00 at Steel Lake Park. Tickets are on sale now. You can buy them from me or whatever favorite Kwanian you have, or you can buy them at the park the night or the day of. We always have good weather. We'll have music. We'll have some auction items. It's a great place for the community to come together, to connect, and we're really excited that we're back in person. So I hope to see each and every one of you there. And on a sad note, Mr. George Warhouser passed away this last, I think it was last weekend. And Federal Way, you know, part of the beauty of Federal Way is because the Warhouser family had a vision for Federal Way. You know, they created the area that my house is located in, and my house before my house, before the one we live in now, was in a planned community that Warhouser helped create. My husband has worked for the company for 40-plus years, but they had a vision for Federal Way, and they had a vision for the property where their headquarters were. I think Federal Way is better because the Warhouser family came to Federal Way. So sorry that he passed away. He was a great person. Thank you very much. Drive safely as you come to AWC. Linda?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Thank you. And I also am a Kwanian, so I'm going to join you in selling tickets. So thank you very much for being here this evening. As I agree with all of my colleagues that we have a wonderful community that we live in, we have wonderful people who get involved, wonderful people roll up their sleeves. Some of you are right here in the audience. And so thank you to all of you. I mean, you all work very, very hard with different issues, and we have issues we have to resolve. Maybe we can't fix it all at once, but maybe if we just take a bite of the apple a little bit at a time, maybe we'll be able to make some progress slowly but surely. And this is not us, this is your city. So you need to weigh in on what you want to have in your city and how your money should be spent. Finally, I want to say thank you to Ms. Universe-to-be, Ms. Kim. Thank you very much for giving me a pin to match your beautiful crown. So thank you. This is the closest I'm ever going to get to that one, but thank you very much. Very thoughtful of you. And she has agreed at some point to come back and sing the national anthem for us, which I thought would be just a wonderful idea. So thank you very much for being here this evening. It is now time to leave. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Good night.